Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order. And first, we're going to review and approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If there are no changes to the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda for today, September 22, 2014, as it's presented? First, a motion from Jen and a second from Sheri. All those in favor of accepting today's agenda, please signify by raising your hands. And let's see. Make sure you raise your hands for just a minute, I want to do a count. One, two, three, four, five, six. We have six people that are voting yes. Any, not for approving the agenda?
I'm going to go to Jen.
All right, another additional vote, seven, eight votes. Everybody unanimous, okay. Now, we're going to move to approve the minutes of September 8, 2014. Is there, are there any changes first to the minutes? I see no hands up for that. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from September 8, 2014? Thank you. Motion from Deanna, second. Thank you, Sheri. All those in favor of approving the minutes from September 8, 2014? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? No, eight, you weren't there.
I would abstain.
Right, one person, yes, abstaining. Comments from the public? To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who wants to speak this evening? There being no one who is coming to speak this evening, we'll start with the reports and recognition. And we're going to be starting first with the school climate and safety. Would there be an introduction to that?
Yes, there will, as they're setting up.
Yes, they're organized.
I will, I'm proud to introduce tonight our school climate and school safety presentation. As you know, these are significant initiatives for the district and for the Board of Education. And we felt that it just made an awful lot of sense to put these together tonight instead of doing them as two standalone presentations because we feel they're so interconnected, as you'll see a little bit about the work and the things that we're doing. Ms. Pianca and Ms. Daley will begin around school climate, and then Ms. Rocco and Dr. Clapp will talk to us about the great work that CAB has been doing in the past year and the plans to move forward this year, continuing doing that work. Looks like we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to begin by thanking my colleague Nora Daley, our district prevention and intervention facilitator. And Nora's been the shepherd of the school climate work that's been done over the last several years, as many of you know. She's been instrumental in designing and structuring the work in our district. And Nora is a Certified Cali School Climate Specialist, which stands for the Connecticut Accountability for Learning Initiative. She is our resident expert in terms of best practice research in respect to school climate. And I'm very proud of the work that she's done, and it is certainly a passion that she has had for several years now. She's led us well. Over time, we've shared information with the board on the topic of school climate. And with some new members present, we thought it would be important to provide you with both some background as well as an update on where we are on this issue. Dr. Lutze, Nora, and I began meeting in the late spring, believe it or not, of last year with administrators to discuss the details of this work that you'll be hearing about shortly. And we've had subsequent conversations and a training session with our administrators that we're very excited to tell you the details about. So with that, I will turn it over to Nora.
Tonight, I promised to be brief. We have a few areas that we want to make sure we cover. Definition of school climate, the drivers behind our school climate work, and our plan for the coming year. We'll start with the definition of school climate. The National School Climate Council provides us with this definition. They talk about school climate as the quality and character of school life. It is the experience of school life that reflects norms, goals, values, interpersonal relationships, teaching and learning practices, and organizational structures. This is a picture of the drivers of our school climate work. There are many factors that tell us that school climate is important. The first, and we like to think that everything else kind of flows from this, is the research. Research tells us that school climate matters. Sustained positive school climate is associated with positive child and youth development, effective risk prevention and health promotion efforts, student learning and academic achievement, increased student graduation rates, and teacher retention. The next driver of our work is something that applies to every Connecticut educator. It is part of our code of professional responsibility. It clearly articulates that each teacher has a responsibility to create an emotionally and physically safe and healthy learning environment for all students. The next driver is our own effective teaching framework. Domain one very clearly articulates that we have a responsibility to create respectful learning environments. But Domains two and three also point us in the direction of understanding the importance of respectful planning and respectful and responsive teaching. These are important practices because they communicate to our children that we know them and we care about their learning and them as people. The next driver is the mandates around response to intervention. Response to intervention tells us that we are required to provide universal instruction, and that means just instruction for all students around areas related to behavior and social skills. This triangle is a picture of how interventions within response to intervention are organized. So you see at the bottom is a large part of the triangle. That is meant to include all students. As you move up the triangle to Tier Two, you see supplemental interventions. So if students are not meeting benchmarks, it is a signal to us that they require more intervention or instruction, and so they move up the triangle and we provide more supplemental interventions. If with supplemental interventions, students still are not meeting benchmarks, then we increase the intensity. And all of this is based on data. The next slide that you see is a representation of laws passed over the last few years that really point us in the importance of establishing and maintaining safe and respectful schools. It demonstrates the importance that the state of Connecticut, the legislature has placed on understanding that creating positive, safe school climates is an effective strategy to ensuring student safety. The next few slides really are provided for reference, and they point out kind of the highlights of the laws that I had articulated in the previous slide. And what they demonstrate for us is, and I'll just kind of go through so you can see all the bullets attached to these pieces of legislation. What they demonstrate is a growing understanding of the complex relationship between safety, mental health, how we treat one another, and learning. The final driver of our school climate work is our district goal number four. In this goal, we demonstrate our commitment, our district commitment, as a faculty to provide environments that foster respect, ethical behavior, and responsible global citizenship for all students. And the last slide that is here kind of as a reference point is something I hope looks familiar to you. It is the SAPL framework, the Social, Academic, and Personal Learning Framework. It articulates what we think is important for students to know in the realm of behavior and social skill development. These skills, these concepts and skills obviously are the foundation of creating positive school climates. This framework is aligned very closely with our TEPAL framework. TEPAL tells our teachers, helps our teachers to understand what their potential for growth is. This is a similar framework that helps them understand the concepts and skills that we want to see our students grow in. So now, we talk a little bit about our plan for this year. As we started to think about what we were going to do with regard to school climate this year, we reflected on our pilot school climate survey that was done back in June of 2013. And there were some things that we felt were very important as we rolled out this next iteration of how we were going to assess our school climate. We felt it was very important to include student voice, to build student ownership, and to provide student leadership opportunities. We, as we do with so many mandates that were given, we really wanted to take this mandate to do a survey and look at it as an opportunity for learning for everyone, for students, for staff, and for parents. And lastly, we wanted to make sure that as we did this work, we really provided a process for meaningful dialogue about school climate over time. And so, we reached out to Bill Preble, who is a contributing author to The Respectful School, which is a core book for the district. He's also the co-author of Transforming School Climate and Learning. And the philosophy, the processes that he outlines very much align with the district's philosophy around engaging students and empowering students. So, Bill will be training us in a process entitled Safe Measures. This process is a student-led collaborative action research process. The foundations of the process start with creating a diverse team of student experts in school climate. The students work with an adult team, and they work together to collect and analyze data. Students are provided with training in the change process and in database decision-making. It's, we're taking the opportunity to assess our school climate as a real-world problem-solving opportunity for students to participate in. So they'll be using their critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, and communication skills through this process. They will learn about a change process, and this is the model that Bill Preble will be working with them and us in training our students. It's a five-step process, and our students are going to participate in every one of the stages. Our timeline actually begins, well, as Darlene said, it began in the spring, to be honest with you. But Bill will be working with us tomorrow. We will be starting with the middle school and the high school. The adult leadership team or the adult design team will be having some professional learning around how to create a diverse student leadership team. He will then invite, or we will invite, our diverse students together to hear about the safe measures process and to invite them to be trained in the process. That training will take place in late October. We will then work together to design, to customize our survey. And then, students will be in a position to share with their peers the work that's been done and to encourage them to take the opportunity to have their voices be heard through completing our survey. They'll then work with the adult team and Bill's team in analyzing the data, doing some goal-setting and action planning, and they will be working with the faculty to parallel that process. So they will actually be going into faculty meetings and walking the faculty through the process. And they will also be sharing the information, the students will be sharing the information with parents. And I kind of hope you will invite them to come here and share our work with you all as well. And then, we will do progress monitoring, as the outline says, March through June. And I will just leave you with a quote from Bill's book. "School climate, the heart and soul of school success for both adults and students. It creates the conditions for students, teachers, and administrators to work effectively, feeling safe and supported, able to make a difference through their efforts, and ready to contribute to the good of the school as a whole." And that is our plan. Oh, and their references are resources at the back.
That sounds like terrific. We have other speakers.
Yep. Now, as Joanne and Steve prepare, I think what you'll notice is a common thread, I think, between the two presentations, along with, you know, the focus on climate and safety, is around the investment in the whole community. As you heard from Nora and Darlene just now, how it's the students, the staff, the parents, the community, all involved with this work together. And that's very similar to the work that's been going on with CAB as you're about to hear.
Thank you, Dr. Lutze.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'd like to start by thanking Joanne Rocco, who's really done yeoman's work in the area of crisis for the Crisis Advisory Board over the last several years. I'm just joining the team as a facilitator, co-facilitator, so I might get a lot of the credit here, but she deserves all of it, so. So, Crisis Advisory Board is, we affectionately call CAB. We're moving into this, we tried to frame tonight's presentation around the New Canaan District Goals. So here is Goal Five, stated right at the beginning, which you all know quite well. Each of the subsequent slides that follow talk about one of the objectives that really are the charge of the Crisis Advisory Board, in that we are continuing to analyze and update safety and security plans and practices. So each of the subsequent slides will be linked to one of the objectives listed here
Our District Crisis Advisory Board has been in place since 2000. We currently have 24 members representing the town, the school administration, and also the central office. And we meet on a monthly basis. We're very, I have to say, we're very fortunate to have the cooperation and collaboration of so many of our town emergency responders who come to all of our meetings and are always willing to meet with us at any time. And they've reviewed all of our plans so that we make sure that they all reflect best practice. So this is, these are the members of our District Crisis Advisory Board. We have an administrator from each of the five buildings. We have 11 central office staff members. And we try to have representation from all of the areas that we feel may be involved in a crisis situation or an emergency situation. And all of these people have been involved in all of our plans also. So we have representation from nursing, social work, food services, finance and operations, human resources, communication, technology, transportation, and facilities. It's important to have the input of all of these people, and they've helped to craft all of our plans for us. And then, on the town and emergency services side, we have representation from the fire department. Fred Baker has been a member of CAB for many years. We have five members of the police department, so we're very lucky to have them attend all of our meetings. The two SROs, our youth officer, Carol Ogrance, has been a member of CAB for many years, and Captain Di Federico and Captain De Mayo also. And we also have Mike Handler from the Director of Emergency Preparedness, and he really is an expert in safety, and he's been so valuable to our committee. And Wendy Hillboat from New Canaan Voluntary Ambulance Corps. And Wendy's been a standing member of our committee for many years also. So we're very fortunate with the committee that we do have and the help that they've offered to us. As Steve mentioned, our presentation is based upon our Board of Education goals. So one of the objectives, Objective A, we've looked at 2013, what we put in place last year, and how we're moving forward with those this year. We put in place Security Phase One, and a lot of that is not really public information, but I know all of that has been shared with you, along with Phase Two, which involves some improvements in security to our facilities and also technology. We, in 2013-14, we ensured that all of our administrators were trained in NIMS-100, and that's a basic level of the incident command system. In 2014-15, we have quite a few new administrators, so we wanted to make sure that they also took this course. We're also trained in CPR, in AED, and also the HEIMLIC, and we wanted to make sure that our new administrators also had that training. 2013-14, fire and lockdown drills with first responders. That's something that is now required by law, that our first responders are in our buildings and that they observe our fire drills and also our lockdown drills. We had done that actually previous to 2013. In 2014, really looking to have enhanced drills, fire drills and lockdown drills, where we have a lot of variables. Typically, we had done a lot of our lockdown drills during kind of calm times of the school day, if there's ever such a thing, where there's not a lot of transition, children are in their classrooms. Just at the end of last year, we started looking at drills where it's a typical time of the day, recess, lunch, transition time in the hallways, and how would we respond? And this is the time to practice during a drill, to see how do our drills work and what do we need to improve upon. Same thing with fire drills. We block exits, what's your alternate egress? So we want people to really think on their feet, which is if we did ever have to, if we did have a true emergency situation, that's what you have to do, and you have to practice to be able to do that. KERMA tabletop drills with CAB. KERMA was one of the companies that had done an audit for us, and they ran us through some tabletop drills where they give us some scenarios and ask, how do we respond? And we talk through and discuss those scenarios. We've done those with our Crisis Advisory Board. This year, we really want to bring that to the school level with our school teams. Each of our schools has a crisis team, so do some of the tabletop drills with them, but also with our staff, because they're the ones that really care for the children in these situations, and we want them to be able to think through some of these situations and what their responses will be. In 2013-14, we had our K-8 campus monitors in place as of April 2013. And 2014-15, this school year, it's been expanded to K-8 campus monitors. So we feel that, in terms of the security inside of the school, that we're very well-staffed, and we appreciate the support of the board.
Thank you.
So that's K-12 monitors, actually, in all buildings. The next slide deals with Objective B from Goal Five, which is to review and implement as appropriate recommendations from expert safety and security reviews and audits. As you can see on the left-hand column, the 2013-14, we had a state police audit, and coming out of those state police audits and walkthroughs was to enhance our safety drills and implement those. As Joanne mentioned, the last one, the enhanced safety drills include throwing lots of variables at a typical drill. So we're really good at fire drills when everybody's in class, but what happens in a fire drill at lunch? So that's part of what we've been implementing over the past year and really trying to get feedback from our first responders on how well we do with that. And so far, we've been doing pretty well, and it helps us refine our practices, really. And last year, we received the KERMA Risk Management Achievement Award as a result of the audit. And we also did a number of safety walkthroughs, and we did certified, non-certified staff training, so all of our substitute teachers are trained, all of our custodians are trained. So we really have, all the people who are in the schools are aware of the procedures and processes related to lockdowns, fires, and other crisis-related incidents. In 2014, this year, as we work forward, as we work through the safety drill implementation, we've also had, at SACS in particular, we've had the SRO implementation. So Jeff Deeks, Officer Jeff Deeks, is the new SRO for SACS. He's become embedded part of the school. He's already a regular staff member. He has an office just off the main lobby. He's not just a kind of a standalone officer in the hallway, but he's in the eighth-grade classrooms a lot. We know the eighth graders are making some important decisions, and so decision-making and dealing with, you know, consequential choices is an important place for him to give his expertise in. And so, he's in workshop classes, he's in, he's in the, with the phys ed classes and project adventure. And he's becoming a part of like the staff with the kids, so they're really getting a close relationship with him. It's been a really nice addition to our team. He's also, of course, a major part of all of our crisis-related and emergency-related decision-making procedures. And then, we're also moving forward with other audit recommendations, and again, we can't really go into them in a public forum, but you've been briefed on a lot of those recommendations as we move forward. Objective C with Goal Five deals with continuing to review, analyze, and accordingly update policies, practices, and protocols associated with safety and security. So to that end, last year, we updated the Crisis Manual and all the flow charts that guide our actions when we are in a crisis. This year, we added a flip chart. The Crisis Manual is not the most handy apparatus when you're in a crisis. It's a number of pages long, a little cumbersome. So the flip chart actually gives the teachers, or a substitute teacher, access to what actions they should take in event of a particular emergency. So it really kind of streamlines the process so they're not reading and looking through tables of contents and index for what they should do. It just gives them a quick flip-to option, and they know what to do from there. Last year, we participated in a reunification study. The reunification process is very complex, as you can imagine. If we were to evacuate the school and move to an off-site location, reuniting parents and children will be a, and is a challenging task, or would be a challenging task. So we spent a lot of time studying, the hardest thing, I think about it, and I think Joanne will agree with me, is that there's not a lot of publicity about their, school districts do not publish their reunification practices, and so there's not a lot of best practices, there's not a lot of research out there that we can turn to. So we turn to our experts. We turn to the police and to the fire and to the outside KERMA experts, and we help to refine and develop a reunification process we think would work pretty well. So this year, as part of that, we will be piloting that in some, in some, some practice models, where we actually practice what a reunification would actually feel like, look like, how it would act, finding a space to do that. Of course, without students involved, but just with staff involved, so we can feel what that process looks like and try to refine that even further. Last year, we also had one of the best training sessions I've been involved with, with Crisis, Lady of the Crisis, and that's the Prepare training. Prepare stands for, let me just look that here. Sorry. Prevent, reaffirm, evaluate, provide, and reform, reform and evaluate. So this process was, included all mental health professionals, administrators, and a number of our first responders who are part of CAB were able to come to this and participate in it. And last year, we learned, we got all the training, and so this year, we'll be implementing part of those processes into our crisis process. Yeah? That covers it?
Thank you.
Just a few bullet points, looking ahead. Crisis Advisory Board is committed to continuing to develop safety drills to inform our protocols and procedures, continuing the training of students, staff, and parents about safety, and that's ongoing, and that's one of our goals this year, and continuing the improvements of safety-related communication systems. Also, the ongoing collaboration with the town safety officials and outside experts to rehearse and refine best practices related to school safety and security. So that is our presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I say thank you on behalf of our Board of Education? I'm sure people will have some questions, but you've been kind enough to include us in both the climate, when we heard of the speaker last spring, which was quite very interesting and helpful. And of course, on the drill and the information that you've provided us for all of the things that you participated and had us participate in. We're grateful for the time and diligence that you've had to make these things all possible. Let me stop then and see if anyone has any questions.
Sangita.
Yeah, I just had a question. Nora, with the school climate study that you're going to be doing with students, just out of curiosity, what types of students are you going to target? Or how are students going to be participating? And how many students do you foresee working together with you to create this process?
So part of our planning tomorrow, our professional learning tomorrow, is really about how to select a diverse student leadership team, because that is very important to us. We want to hear from as many different groups within our schools as possible. So I'll have more information for you on that tomorrow. The target for the student group is to be working with a group of about 15 to 20 students at the middle school and the same at the high school. So they would be trained, and part of their work will be to make some plans about how to bring other people, other students, into the process. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Sheri.
Thank you, Nora, for a great presentation. I'm just curious how we extend some of these principles to the cyber world. You know, we talk about the, you know, the anonymous notification of bullying, when you know who your bully is. But when it's cyberbullying and you don't know who it is, what does a student do? And how do we monitor that student behavior and, and again, extend some of these principles in that new world?
I think one of the best ways that we can do that is by bringing the students into the process early on, giving them opportunities to really frame questions for us, share experiences with us, and then together, working with them to come up with some solutions and some strategies for how to cope with that. And then, quite honestly, to be sharing that with parents as we go along, so that we're all working together to help students deal with what is just an enormously challenging situation for them.
One of the things we really liked about this approach, this Safe Measures approach, is, as you may be aware, we started last, two years ago, the state mandates that we do a school climate survey. So there's different ways to approach that. The Safe Measures idea is that we'll go through and do the survey, and then it'll be our students and our teachers working together to create meaning from the results of that survey. And then based on that, students will be developing action plans around areas for improvement that they've identified by doing that. I would imagine that what you mentioned is going to be one of the areas for improvement, as it would be, I think, in just about any school district. So I think one of the strengths of this is that the students will be helping us to develop kind of what those processes and how to learn and how to teach around appropriate use of technology and the cyberbullying and those things. And the hope is that by doing it that way, it's much more sustainable in the culture, because it's the students who are sort of identifying, they're seeing the problem by looking at the data, then they're developing action plans, implementing them, and then looking to see how those results have impacted behavior or not, and then further refining their plans. So I think that's pretty exciting to have the students as a part of the solution in that. And I think hopefully, that's the idea there, is it builds that sustainable culture to improve.
No, I definitely agree with you, Dr. Lutzey, that having students involved, I commend you for bringing them into the process, because I think students listen to other students. I think they are able to talk, because even with the cyber world, there's a lot of things that we're just really not aware of, because we lived in a different world when we were growing up. So I commend you definitely for that. And I also like the fact that these kids also get to do the other part of our school district, of learning really problem thinking. You know, this is what we're training them to do, is that there are issues out there, and you know, let's address them, you know, and figure out what, how to do it best, you know? So, great.
Part of our goal really is to train the future leaders of our country and the world. And so this is a little microcosm of how to make social change. And I better stop talking now, because I could really get on my soapbox, and I don't want to do that.
It's a wonderful soapbox. Penny, fashion?
Yeah, this is enormously important work, and so I appreciate the update and all the hard work you all are doing on behalf of the students in the district. I was wondering, for the Public Act 14234, Concerning Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, which talks about teen dating. I was wondering, that looked like it was a new law that was just passed this year. And I was wondering, what was the plan, the district plan for implementing the new requirements on that act? I mean, it was an amendment, so I don't know, maybe we were already doing a lot of this, but I just wanted to check.
Right. I think as we go through this year, we will be designing some strategies for how to address that. And again, it's mostly training for staff and making sure that we are aware of signs and signals of that kind of behavior, and that we are intervening and providing supports. But we will be working on putting together a more specific plan over the course of the year.
Okay, great. Thanks.
We thank you very much, again, all of you, for coming and presenting and giving us this information. And thank you, most of all, for the work that goes on behind the scenes that we don't see, that you're putting it all together and working with the various groups of caring people in our community. Thank you. Our next part of the agenda is moving to the Communications Subcommittee update. Ms. West.
Do we want to, do we want to let them go?
Yes, please feel free to, please feel free to go. Thank you.
Okay, so for the Communications Committee update, we just wanted to update you on our work. This committee, as you recall, was approved as a special committee for one year, with the term ending this November. And it's comprised of Ms. Appel, Ms. Richardson, and myself. And we're currently focused on three areas that I wanted to update you on, which is the website, PR, and the stakeholder engagement. And all of these areas are aligned with Dr. Lutzey's leadership and support. The first area is the website. And when we first convened as a committee, we recognized the essential role that the website plays with our communication and the limitations of our current design platform. So we worked with Dr. Kolik at the time to prioritize funds and to assemble a workgroup for that. And Ms. Richardson continues to be involved in that with the monthly meetings to help facilitate the stakeholder engagement, working toward a new website design, which we launched in January of 2015. The second area is public relations. And the backdrop for this, of course, is that the 24/7 media cycle has completely changed the communications landscape. So we've spent a significant amount of time strategizing on how to best relay our positive news stories. And there's so much positive news going on in both our schools and with our student achievement. And for this area, under Dr. Lutzey's leadership, we're implementing regular education spotlights in our local media. And this will be facilitated with a look-ahead calendar to make sure that we've got all different perspectives represented, including the faculty, the students, and the parents. And then the third area is the stakeholder engagement. And of course, as a school district, we are committed to continuous improvement and to engaging our stakeholders and listening to, we always want to listen to their viewpoints. So for this, we are planning a survey and some focus groups in October. And Dr. Lutzey has actually already been out on quite a busy roadshow, visiting all the schools, the PTC meetings. And he's in the process of reaching out to key community organizations. And in this area, what we envision is a kind of a regular annual speaking calendar with outreach to both the parent and the community groups. And just a note to anyone that's listening at home, we always want to hear from you. So please continue to send your emails and your questions and your concerns to us. And then before our committee term expires, what we will do is the work of documenting all of the communication protocols. We have had some new process improvements put into the process. We'll be looking to leverage the new PICs role, the Communication Specialist role, Susan Kelly, as well as our PTCs, to institutionalize different communication process improvements, such as the budget quick notes and an annual stakeholder survey. And then just in closing, this, we want to acknowledge that this has been a tremendous team effort, specifically the leadership and work of Dr. Rob Miller and Susan Kelly, and also the many PTC volunteers, the presidents. We have Board of Ed reps and also PR reps that have been helping us with the communications work. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, or...
Well, I just want to echo the thank you saying to your, first to your committee members, Jen Richardson and also Sangita Appel. And as Chair, Sheri, very much appreciate what you all have done to organize and make sure that our communication is getting out, so that people can understand all the good things that are happening in the school system. So thank you. Moving to our next agenda item, that would be Statement of Accounts. Frank, would you please, we just, do you want to do that?
Just, as you met Frank at our last meeting, he was here with Nancy. I'll give a quick report on Nancy. She's recovering well and working very hard to get back as soon as she can, as you would expect. She created her schedule, and she plans on making sure everybody around her sticks to it. So she's recovering well and quickly. But Frank has been working to put together our Statement of Accounts to share with us tonight. Frank?
All right.
Take it away.
The Statement of Accounts is through August 31st, so it only includes the months of July and August. So, for example, in the salaries, they're, the salaries do not include any of the teachers, obviously, because they don't start until September. So, but it does reflect any teachers or administrators that get paid through the 12 months. On the benefits, I mean, most of them are self-explanatory, but for the other employee benefits, that includes any tuition reimbursements that were issued through the two months. On the legal matters, that is our legal shipment in Goodwin. And what that covers is that, is the basic and special ed matters that they invoice us for. And what we've done on the encumbered side is to encumber an average of what the cost would be for the full year. And then that will eventually, as we get the invoices in, they will go to the, you know, on the year-to-date expenditure side, and it will reduce the encumbered as we move On the property services, the biggest drivers there is the maintenance and repairs. That's basically all the various facility contracts that Bob Willoughby has. For example, fire protection, the train company for the air conditioning units, and the auto home electric insurance. Also, under the, under property services, the other part of it is the rentals, which includes our central office and the launch office on the first floor at the central office. For purchase services, the other purchasing services, that includes our telephone and postage that we've, that we've expensed through the first two months. On the instructional supplies, the, that area is all the different instructional departments. For example, the general department, I'm sorry, the general area, the mathematics, science, STEM, language arts, and special education. So that includes any instructional supplies that any of those departments have acquired during the two months. For the, the equipment leases, we leased some special ed vans for the, for some of the students, because we were not, we have not acquired any additional vans for those students. So right now, we presently lease those. And then there's also, at SACS, they have, they have purchased some furniture and cabinets for the STEM, the STEM area at the SACS Middle School. On the other expenses, what we have, for the fees, it's just, you know, the various, the CAE, the CAS, and the CAPSS of fees that we usually pay at the beginning of the school year, and it covers the, you know, it covers the entire year. And the other expenses, basically, it's the Cablevision, Crystal Rock, and some administration workshops that we've had through the summer.
Does anyone have any questions? Looks as if there are no questions. Thank you very much for the report.
You're welcome.
Very helpful. Now move to the action items. The first action item is the New Canaan High School field trip to China. Dr. Laduke?
Thank you all for having us. We're very happy to be here tonight. Ms. Rosenthal is here to tell you a little bit about all that great information you got in your packet. The Students of Chinese have been begging her on a regular basis to go back to China. It's been a while since they've been there. So she's the expert in that area, and she's going to give you a little bit of information about the trip, and of course, answer any questions that you have. Mrs. D'Amico and I have been meeting with her, with Ms. Rosenthal, pretty regularly over the last month. And she has certainly gotten us very excited about this trip. So I hope that she will be able to answer all of your questions, and you'll be kind enough to approve this opportunity for our students. Mrs. Rosenthal?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right? Hope so. Okay. I just want to make a brief statement, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the proposed trip in April of 2015. First of all, as you know, my name is Linda Rosenthal. This is my ninth year here in this district. I started teaching German and Spanish when I arrived here. Six years ago, I started the Chinese, the Mandarin program here at the high school. Since then, I've gone on three trips, two of which have involved students. The first time was with administrators, we went to China. And then on two separate occasions, I organized a trip through EF Educational Tours for our students to go to China. And this will be our, my fourth trip, and hopefully, the students will really enjoy this opportunity. As I've said, I'm very comfortable working with this organization, EF Tours. It's been around since 1960. Because it does a tremendous amount of volume, it's able to get very good prices for our students. They also have a very excellent flexible paying policy, provided we're able to sign up in a timely manner. As far as the tour is concerned, this is a nine-day tour. It takes 24 hours from door to door to get to China. So of the nine days, two days are spent traveling to the other side of the world. Seven days, we will be, for seven days, we'll be sightseeing. We're going to start out in Beijing, Beijing, and then we're going to see in Beijing the Great Wall, the Forbidden City. And we'll go to some Hutong's, we'll be going all over Beijing. And then we'll be moving on to Xi'an, the ancient capital. And I'm sure some of you have heard of the Terracotta Soldiers. We'll be spending a day there. We'll be going along the Silk Road in Xi'an, which is amazing. And then we'll be finally ending our tour in Shanghai. We'll be going to the Financial District in Shanghai. And it's funny, I love Beijing. The kids love Shanghai. For some, even though it's modern and it's not as cultural, the kids seem to love Shanghai. As far as the price is concerned, it's about $3,200. And that includes just about everything you can imagine. It includes the travel to and from China, travel throughout China, because the country's so large, we have to fly from all, from one city to the next. It includes ground transportation. It includes hotel accommodations, which are business class. So typically, we have two students, two students share a room, they have their own private bathroom. The accommodations are very nice, and they're in safe areas. It includes food costs, tickets to various destinations. It's basically, everything is included, with two small exceptions. The visa, which I have to take care of sometime in February, because these are short-term visas that we're applying for. And also, ground transportation from New Canaan High School to Kennedy. to Kennedy and back. That's typically how we do it. Instead of having the kids meet us at the airport, which would be chaotic, we meet here, we take a limo to the airport, we stay together, and then, obviously, at the very end, we come back to the high school. That's just an additional $200 for, including visa and ground transportation to JFK. Why am I offering this trip? I'm offering it because Chinese is a very difficult language. Students don't have to take Chinese. They most take Spanish. And I really feel that if students are going to work so hard to learn this very difficult language, especially for a Westerner, then they ought to have the opportunity, at least once during their high school years, to visit China. And that's why I'm proposing this trip, and that's why I want to take the students on this trip. I used to go more frequently with the students. It's been a few years. The demand has been building and building. Parents have been calling, students have been asking. There is a demand to go to China. And I feel it's, you know, it's a big commitment, and I'm giving up my vacation to take them, but I feel it's worth it, because they've put a lot of effort into learning this language, especially those in Level Four. They stayed with it, they've stuck with it, and I think they should have a chance to see this amazing culture. Also, want to say very briefly that I've stayed in touch with some of my former students, and they email me periodically. They'll, they say to me that they'll, you know, they forget a lot of things that happened in high school, but they're never going to forget their trip to China. I mean, that's something that's just, it's a memory they'll have for the rest of their lives. And I know a lot of the students that have gone to China on previous trips with me are studying Mandarin in college. Many of them want to do a junior year in China, and a lot of them say it's because they had this exposure that would just really open them up in so many ways. And I know you're going to say, oh, what a coincidence, but it's really true. A day ago, I got an email from a student who did go to China with us on our previous trip, and I mentioned to her that we may be going again. And she said, I won't mention her name, but she said, I'm going to quote this, let's see, hold on. She said, "I'm jealous. I want to go back. It was the best trip. I still tell my friends about it all the time," end quote. And, and I have it, you know, I can prove to you, it's a real legitimate email, it's not a plug here. It's just an amazing trip. It's a great experience, and I won't be offering this trip on a yearly basis. This is once every few years. So, this is the year that I can go, and it's going to be during April break, and it's a wonderful opportunity for, for the students. So, this is, you know, I'm proposing this trip. Are there any questions about the, anything?
I just had a question. How many students are enrolled in Mandarin this year, and how many would you expect to take advantage of this trip?
Okay. We have, the program is growing slowly. It's pretty comparable to other, very comparable to other districts in terms of enrollment. We have about 64 students in all, in Levels One through Four. I gave my students at the beginning of the year, of the year, a little survey. I told them, don't write your name, I just want to get a sense of who might be interested. And of the 64, a couple didn't hand it in, but basically, eight said, no matter what they're going. Another, seven said they have too many commitments with sports, this and that. And then there was 40-something, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was in the 40s, who said, probably want to go, just need more information. So, I do, and we need a total of 14 students for this trip to happen. The reason being that I don't, I need to have a chaperone with me. It's too, too great a responsibility to take somebody else's children across the planet without any, without anyone else. I just won't, I won't do it. So, we need a minimum of 14 in order to have myself and another person come along for the trip. So, those are the numbers.
I saw another hand, Allison.
Yeah, she looks like a fabulous, fabulous trip. Quick question for you. Is this only open to the Mandarin students then?
It is. They have to be presently studying Mandarin, yes.
Okay. And I know something the board is always concerned about, at $3,200 a student. Can you speak a little bit to either the fundraising or the financial aid opportunities for kids who might find this difficult?
Sure. I can. We're going to have a few fundraising, fundraising events, such as cookie drives, things of this nature. But let's be honest and frank about this. $3,200 is not cheap. I mean, there are payment options so that it can be minimized, you know, each month, maybe $500 or so, but we're not going to be able to come up with more than a few hundred dollars. The reason is, the students work really hard at this high school. They have a lot of commitments, a lot of responsibilities. And for me to insist that they, every weekend, you know, do another fundraiser is unrealistic, and they, they won't do it. They just have too many other commitments. So, I'm going to try to address that by having some, some fundraising activities, but it's just not going to, I mean, I'm being honest. I could tell you, yeah, we'll, we'll make tons of money, but to be honest, we're not a cookie factory. This isn't, you know, Chips Ahoy. We can only do what we can do. So, we'll make every effort to, to raise some funds, but this is an extra trip. This is, not everybody's going to go on this, and it's not, no one's going to be penalized by not going on it. This is extra, and hopefully, many students can, can join us. Most students tell me it, the cost is not the big deal. It's, it's having that, well, it's having this payment plan, because the longer we delay this, the, the more money the parents have to, to spend every month. If we start now or in the next week or so, they have several months in which to pay off this amount of money. So, that's what the parents are telling me, and the students, that the sooner we get this moving along, the better it is, the easier it is for them financially.
Thank you. Other questions? Deanna?
I just have a few questions on sort of the safety, security. It's kind of one of those days.
Sure, absolutely.
First, on the chaperones, I mean, what will be the ratio? Like, let's say you get 20. What is your chaperone-to-student ratio going to be?
Typically, it's six or seven students per chaperone. According to EF, with EF Educational Tours, for every six students who sign up, we get a free chaperone. So, that means technically 12, but I've set the bar at 14, because based on my experience over the last several years, and having gone to China over the last several years, we always have at the last minute, one or two folks, sometimes, at least two students, who have to cancel for personal and other reasons. And if we drop below that 12, then I'm, I'm taking 11 kids to China, and I don't want to do that, as I said. So, the ratio is, for every six students or seven students, one adult.
And who, who are these chaperones? I mean, obviously, you're one.
I'm one.
Sort of additional chaperones?
Okay.
Are they educators in the schools? Are they, how?
Well, previously, I've had, well, one was the school nurse, who did come along, but she said from the very beginning, she's not going to dispense medication, she's going just as a chaperone. And that, that's another issue, by the way, the, you know, medication. I've had the school nurse, I've had a colleague, not a colleague, a close friend who's fluent in Mandarin, who used to come and volunteer at the school. She came one year. The most important thing for me is someone who is very good with kids, someone who understands kids really well, and I can work with. So, I haven't decided at this point, because it's still a little premature. I have a few people in mind. One is a special ed teacher. Another person is a young woman. She's getting her doctorate in clinical psychology. She's my daughter. But, but she's, she works with teenagers at Trinity College, at New York Presbyterian. She's doing her dissertation. So, forget the fact that she's my, she's actually excellent with kids. She may not be able to come, but she's someone I'm considering. I'm also considering a special ed teacher and also another teacher in the World Language Department. No decisions have been made on that yet.
Okay. And then, I did have a question on the trip cancellation and interruption insurance. Do, do the parents get a full refund if the trip is canceled beforehand? And sort of how does the interruption work? And actually, sort of how does, logistically, that work if we have an interruption while they're there?
Well, if there's some sort of international crisis, if, if you mean something like that, for instance.
In the world we live in, that might happen.
Then, well, that's never happened yet, but EF Tours does have a cancellation policy. I think it's something like 140-something dollars. I don't have the exact amount, but it's, it's very minimal.
But it's not, it's minimal.
If, it's insurance. It's basically insurance, so that if they have to cancel at any time during, between now and April, by spending an additional 140-odd dollars, they will get a full refund. They will get a refund. If, if EF Tours, for whatever reason, has to cancel the trip because of, it's never happened, but let's just say there's some sort of crisis, international crisis, then, then I can't, I'm sure we would get reimbursed, or they would postpone the trip by, I don't know. It's, it's a theoretical situation. It's never happened. So, I'm assuming it won't. But I'm sure that there are, you know, measures in place to address something of this nature. But the, but the 140-odd dollars is, is the insurance that, that parents can take out to ensure that if they need to cancel for whatever reason, they will get reimbursed.
Can I ask you, while you're talking about insurance, also, is there any medical coverage for the students while they're there?
There is some through EF Educational Tours. If, if parents have private insurance, that's fine, too, but EF Educational Tours does provide some medical insurance. I don't have the details on that. I know that it's, it may be in the PowerPoint. It's, you know, it's in the literature. Most, most students, I'm sorry.
The PowerPoint, the PowerPoint has. But most, most, I mean, as someone who's had a child in an emergency room overseas, most US providers aren't covering international expenses, so it would be sort of a, you know, pay-go kind of thing, or, you know, kind of.
Well, EF, EF Tours does provide medical coverage.
Okay.
You know, so that is, and if there ever were an emergency of any kind, you know, keep in mind, I'm not just taking the students. Each city has its own guide, tour guide, who stays with us in each city until we move on to the next city, and then we have a new tour person. So, they would be the person to contact if something should happen. Nothing has happened since, but, you know, things happen. Yeah. Yes?
I'm just wondering, my sons went overseas, it was at the collegiate level, they were always advised by, by the SOS Plan, which included emergency evacuation back to the United States, kind of at the discretion of the student, not the medical professional in the country in which they were visiting. And I was just wondering if we had that, emergency, that can be pretty expensive.
Emergency.
Emergency evacuation back to the United States in the insurance.
I don't know. To be honest with you, I don't know. I can, I can contact EF Tours and find out. It's probably in the literature somewhere. I can, I can look into that.
That'd be, that'd be great. And I don't know if it's an add-on, but it'd be something I think the district might want to consider.
Yeah, yeah. And, and everybody feels differently. Some, some parents, you know, want additional coverage of all kinds, others don't. I mean, they're not, no one is forced to take on additional expenses if they choose not to. So, yeah, I, that's the only way I can answer that, is one, I'm not 100% sure, but EF Tours, if, I could call the, the operator there, the tour guide, and the regional director, actually, and he could, he could answer that question. It's in, it's in the literature somewhere, I'm sure.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Allison.
I just want to say, I know we're voting on this as an action item tonight, and I'm happy to do so, because I think it looks like a wonderful trip, but I think we should really dot our i's and cross our t's in terms of what the coverage is for these kids and what the options are for the parents. I'm looking at this, and it says optional all-inclusive coverage plan. And we all know that all-inclusive is wide-ranging. So, again, to the point of some of the other members, in this day and age, even though nothing's ever happened in the past, hopefully, nothing will ever, you know, will happen in the future, but we don't know that anymore. So, I think it's really, really important that the parents understand exactly what their options are, and if they're purchasing something, what they're purchasing, and.
Well, to address that question, assuming you approve this, this trip, next week, I'm going to be inviting the, the parents to, to the school to meet with the EF Tour rep, who will be presenting a PowerPoint along, and this, the regional director will be coming, and he will answer all the questions, all the possible questions, from basic questions to general questions, so that it'll be a free-flowing question-and-answer session. But I just want to stress, I, a lot of parents are calling me, emailing me, students are telling me, we have to get going. And I, you know, I'm happy to do this. It's a big commitment, it's a big sacrifice, and I don't want to, I don't want to keep delaying this. Where all the information is going to be presented to the parents next week, the details. So, if you want to delay this, that's fine, but I'm, I don't know if I want to continue with this process. I mean, it's, it's, it's a big responsibility, and, you know, a lot of teachers can't do this, and I'm just saying that next week, all the information will be presented, but I have to respond to parents and students, and.
Well, you just answered my other question, which was going to be, how are you going to educate the parents? So, that's helpful to know that you're bringing in the rep next week, and they'll get a chance to.
He will answer every single possible question next week.
Right, which is fabulous.
And it's a mandatory session. I, I plan on sending the students home with a letter saying when we're going to be meeting, and that if their, their son or daughter is interested in going, wants to go, or is even interested, it is mandatory, mandatory that they come, because as I understand it, there will be a letter that, that the parents will have to sign. I think it's a Board of Ed letter, that they will be required to sign before they sign their, before they enroll their student, their, their children in this, on this trip.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I just want to say, thank you so much for volunteering to do this, because it's amazing. I mean, my, my kids don't take Mandarin, they take, they take Latin, but they were able to go on a trip to Italy this summer, and it was life-changing for them, to be able to see different cultures, to see what they study, and it just, you know, makes education so much more alive for them. So, I, it's so great that you're doing this.
Thank you.
And it'd be interesting, I, I'm actually looking into this, like, cancel-for-any-reason type of insurance as well, and, you know, again, it's an option, and I think that parents, you know, parents are making this choice, like, to send their children here, and, and I think it sounds great. You might, I know Wendy Vallot goes to Italy, and I don't know what the policy is for their cancellation or whatever, but it might be something to look into as far as, like, the type of insurance or cancellation stuff that they have, but, but I think it sounds great. I wish I could go.
Thank you. And again, as I, as I said, next week, all, all the questions will be answered in detail, because the regional director is coming to the school. He has informed me that he's going to stay until the last parent leaves. He, he's been doing this for, I think, 10 years now, so any question that a parent could have, he has probably already answered. I apologize that I don't have the detailed details as far as the medical insurance, this and that, but he certainly can answer that question, those questions, so.
We appreciate that you're, you're doing that. I think that's a very good thing to have, and get the questions answered, and couldn't agree more about the wonderful educational experience.
Well, thank you.
I think the questions we're asking about here that have to do with medical, and unfortunately, those things have happened. In fact, they happened to our family this summer, so we were very glad to have insurance. We didn't have to have anybody come back. We were glad that we had the insurance if we had to. And so, I think it's an important question to ask, because I'm not sure about the liability of the school system, if, who would pay for that if it had to happen. I think that's an important question for us. I think those are things that we can understand, they're be difficult, and I think that's why people are asking. Yes, Mr. Ashen?
I was going to say, I'm prepared to vote on the plan tonight, and I appreciate everything you're doing. I just want the people who are looking at it to think, to make certain that they understand what the coverage is, and whether or not a parent wants to take an option on trip cancellation. Insurance seems to me, you know, perfectly reasonable, but whether or not the child has the additional illness and accident coverage, seems to me that that's the type of thing that we might, as a district, want to require and not make optional. So, I don't know what all the details are. You probably weren't expecting this level of inquiry.
I wasn't.
But obviously, we haven't, we don't feel like we're qualified.
It's not in my notes.
Looking at your itinerary, so we're kind of looking at just these, you know, potential risk issues and safety issues.
We have, we have many international school trips that happen every year.
Right, so it ought to be the same.
So, I, I have to assume that at the top level, that we've addressed them this. Like, you said, you're, you don't have the details at your fingertips, but, I mean, we have eighth graders going to Rome every year.
Right. So, we have the same issue. Yes.
And I mean, at the high school, too, I have to say, because this is a great adjunct
to all the other programs we already have going, I know that the Madrigals have gone to England, we've had trips to, I mean, Malian goes to The Hague, we've got trips to Rome, whatever else, and I think it's wonderful to have that component, because we are such a global community, and for the kids to get that experience. So I feel like there is precedent set for these type of trips.
So investigation would be helpful, I think, for us to be able to know about. So are you making a motion, then, Ms. Ashen, were you moving that for the trip?
Sure, I would move approval of the trip.
Second? Okay, Mr. Goodman has his hand up, too. All right, all those in favor? We have eight people saying in favor. So you're...
Hazel.
Yes. So there are eight people that are raising their hands, maybe it's nine.
I think you're supposed to vote.
That's a green light.
No, it's eight, it's eight, because we're missing one. No, we're missing one person, so there are eight people that are voting in favor, and one is not here.
Okay.
Okay, and I think you get an idea of what we're asking.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We can't wait to hear about it.
Yeah, well, after the trip, maybe they can come back and tell you a little bit about it.
We'd love to have them come back, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to the next action would be, Deanna, would you explain to us about, help everybody to understand, the Board of Ed Subcommittee Educational Resources are on our first read?
Well, so I think we have a few committees that sort of lapsed in the last year or two, and I think sort of to have a more efficient, you know, exercise of board work, it is important to sort of reestablish some of the committees that existed previously and maybe need to be renewed. So I was selected Chair of the Educational Resources Committee, and we are just looking to, you know, on the deliverables, you know, continue to work with the Finance and Operations Manager as we go through the budget process. Oh, I should back up, Hazel and Allison are both on this committee, so we all work together to, you know, formulate this charter, so I'm sorry, I didn't, I should have done that first. And it was a pleasure, we got through this fairly quickly, so that's always a plus. And then we'll also be looking at the enrollment and how it relates to our facilities in the district. Insurance has been a hot-button issue within the town and the district, so we want to make sure that our insurance policies are sort of what we are hoping they are, and we're getting value for the dollar that we expect. And finally, to release, review our lease terms and agreements in the next year. So I guess, I don't know if people have questions, or...
Questions, yes. Sheri?
I just have two, one question and one comment. So first of all, there is a standing enrollment committee chaired by Mr. Cass, which is actually has two board members currently appointed, Hazel and Scott, and I previously served on that committee, but I was taken, I was kicked off. But just my question, that we do have, like, a standing enrollment committee, so I just want to make sure we're clear on the definition of that committee versus this committee.
And I haven't seen the enrollment committee charter, so I'm not sure exactly, I think we were kind of looking, do we have the facilities to, you know, properly deal with the enrollment that we have? I'm not sure what the charge of the enrollment committee is, I'm...
They would be making recommendations.
I could see the two committees working in conjunction with one another, where the enrollment subcommittee would share information with the resources committee and some thinking, and it would be, so they would work, work in conjunction with one another to evaluate the resources, as far as those structures go, the buildings go, and perhaps make recommendations to the full board if things need to happen.
I would just suggest maybe talking offline, and I'm just asking the question if it makes sense to fold that enrollment committee into this committee? I mean, that enrollment committee was formed a year and a half, two years ago, at a different time, when our enrollment projections were increasing, and we were very concerned about a specific, you know, specific capacity issues at Saks. I think those concerns have been alleviated. I just, maybe it would be helpful to have an offline discussion about the role of the two committees, and if it's best if they work together, or maybe they're folded into each other, just to maximize efficiency.
I think we wanted to make sure that we didn't start doing things about the budget or talking about budget things unless we knew enrollment, so I think it's more that they are going to meet, come up with recommendations, and come to this committee, I think, and tell us what's going on. We're not trying to do an enrollment study, we want to take their information, and we just want to make sure everybody knew, we're not ignoring the information. That would be a starting point for all of us on any discussions. So I think that's what the idea was, to see. Allison?
I also think, I look at the other, the Enrollment and Capacity Committee, is looking at demographers, you know, looking at the models that our demographers are using, and that kind of came out of the fact that we were so underestimating our enrollment, I mean, that's only one piece of it, I know, but I think when we were, when we were talking about what the responsibilities of the resources committee was, it was really to look at, in terms of enrollment, really kind of what comes out of that committee, and then how that's going to affect the budget, that's going to affect the finance. We're really, like, a very small piece, I think, kind of following up, as Brian said, kind of working in conjunction, but we almost follow them a little bit, in terms of what their recommendations will lead to, in terms of financial resources.
Any other questions? Jean?
I have comments up on Allison's thing, that, for instance, that maybe we have to, we should consider replacing the, well, there's going to be a proposed of portables at Saks, possibly, for instance, and I think it would be the resources committee to address that issue, if the enrollment committee predicts that there will be such a situation, so the two parts should be separate, but they work with each other. A comment, though, hopefully, the committees will give the Board of Ed a week's notice of their meetings.
A week, well, maybe not a week.
Well, when you...
I think it's, yeah, I think we'll notify everyone, I think you're required 24 hours, but, yeah, there's 24-hour posting, so, but as, if people are interested, I will definitely make sure that everybody understands when our meetings are, you know, so we want people to be aware of what's going on.
Right, informed. Penny, did you have a second?
Sure, I had one change I'll bring in, and I think in our bylaws, the Board of Ed bylaws, we have a couple of long paragraphs that talks about how members to Board of Ed committees are selected. So I think rather than repeat all that here, you don't have to write this down, because I wrote it, I'll pass it, I would just change it to say, the Board of, the committee will be comprised of at least three Board of Ed members designated by the Board chair in accordance with Article III, Section 5 of the Board of Ed bylaws, and then you don't have to, and then take, delete the rest of that sentence, because then I think it just says, we're going to be following our procedures, but I'm happy to pass this down.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think that's what you wanted, Sangeeta, and then the other question I had was just on Section C, which says, "Review of lease terms and agreements." I had a conversation with Allison, and she says that you're talking about the length of leases there, is that what you're looking at?
I think it's also the car, the various vehicles that are rented, and I think those were the things primarily, just to see, just to talk about those. Those have been questions that have been answered, that have been asked during the budget process, and we were trying to anticipate what would be questions that would be asked, so that this committee would be prepared.
Yeah, I think Penny's probably in our discussion with her legal mind.
So the only thing is, I read that, and I did look at my legal mind, and I thought, what is this committee doing, looking at every single term in all of our leases? Because I look at that as a lawyer, and I said, "Review lease terms and agreements," I'm like, we're supposed to be looking at the insurance terms, although it seemed intrusive in not what was intended. So what I was going to suggest is that just the two words, "terms" and "be deleted," and if you just want to say, "Review of lease agreements," it's a little bit more global and doesn't suggest that the Board of Ed is all of a sudden substituting its judgment there. So if you want the suggested change in Section 4, I'll pass that down about membership.
Sheri?
Okay, so I just have a question on 3D. If it, if it makes sense, or if it's possible for us to expand that a little bit, to actually working with, like, the town funding bodies, to look at both the transparency and the efficiency of the budget process? I mean, is that, I mean, we've talked, I think, as a board with the other town funding bodies, that perhaps there could be some improvements made to that process, and I'm wondering if this would be the right committee, the representative committee, to take that forward with the other town funding bodies?
I think the spirit of what you're saying, I think we're already doing, and it's sort of being done in conjunction with the Finance and Operations Group, so I think if you want some clarification of language, we can, we can look at that, I think we want to be careful about sort of what we are committing ourselves to doing, so, but...
Right, I understand that, it's just that the current wording makes it sound like we're looking at our, only at our internal process.
Yes.
Versus, I think it would be healthy for us to say that we're looking at...
Well, I don't think it says internal, because it says working with Finance and Operations for transparent budget.
Right, but I mean, we're looking at our own internal organization, to make sure we can make that as transparent, but I think that we all agree that we should, that there's a goal out there to improve, you know, that process.
Right, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
With all stakeholders, and perhaps we could reflect that here.
Right.
So could we say work with, you know...
Stakeholders?
Finance and Operations Manager and other stakeholders, or other town funding bodies, to continue a transparent...
I think stakeholders is...
Okay.
I mean, we could even get rid of Finance and Operations and say stakeholders.
Yeah, just say stakeholders.
Are you okay with that?
Could we...
Yeah, with stakeholders.
And then to continue a transparent and efficient budget process?
Did we put the word "all" in there? I'm not sure, I'm not sure where that would end, if we put "all" in there.
No, I just, I just say work with stakeholders.
Or key stakeholders.
I like "key" better, because I'm not sure it would end with "all."
Yeah. Yeah, so just work with key stakeholders to continue a transparent and efficient budget process, is that...
Perfect, yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Okay, we've had an amended presentation for the, for this charter, for this Educational Resources, for the subcommittee. Any other discussion?
I guess this is... One question, it says special committee, so I don't know, it has to be a special committee for a year.
Yes.
So I just didn't know if we wanted to somehow note that in the...
It says for, it says...
Does it have the word "special" anywhere?
Yeah, number eight.
Yeah, one year, and final deliverable date one year from approval of special committee.
Oh, okay, that sounds fine.
It spells it out there.
So I have a just question on that, did we want to create any standing committees, or no, we want to start them off as special and see if it's...
You have to.
You have to. It's in the bylaws.
Great. Thank you.
We don't get a choice.
Hazel, the only other thing, I didn't notice, but in the committee name, just for uniformity's sake, we probably want to say BOE, if we're saying BOE, we want to say BOE Educational Resources Committee, and that only because the other ones read that way, too.
Did they say that on the...
Committee named BOE Educational Resources Committee.
Yes, just had the word committee.
BOE Educational Resources.
I want to say special committee, too. I would say special committee, too.
All right, we are, you are recommending that we make that change to special committee, so that would be also...
We didn't call the Communications Committee a special committee.
Yes, I don't think Communications was special. I don't think...
Whatever we decide, we should just be consistent.
I think so, too, we've sort of kept that going. Okay, we now need to have a, unless there's more discussion...
What did we decide on the, I'm sorry?
Special, we said, we haven't done that, we didn't do, it's not the precedent, we're going to keep the precedent.
Okay, so we're not going, we're just going to call it BOE Educational Resources Committee.
Exactly, okay, if we could have a motion for that?
I don't think we need a special.
Wait, let me just wait, move to approve.
We make the motion on the first read often, and we don't vote on it until the second read.
That's correct, that's correct.
So I would move for the approval of the charter for the Educational Resources Special Committee as amended in our discussion tonight.
Okay. Lisa, you all right on that?
Continue a second.
I think that we...
Yep.
Yes, we do, yes, we do, thank you. And we don't vote, though, that we just stop right there. And moving right along, thank you very much, Deanna, for that. One of the things, I think, also, for people that are not familiar with what we're doing, just to make sure you understand, that the board, that the district has goals, and the Board of Education has goals that are linked to the district goals, which is what we're trying to do, is to have committees that will be working on their particular, our particular parts of what's happening with the goals. Now, looking at strategic planning, Sangita, would you like to make a report for us on that?
Okay, so I don't have a copy here to give everyone, but I did email everybody, so if you have your iPads or emails, you can get, it should be on your, you know, but I'll just read it over. So our committee charter, we're proposing the Strategic Planning Committee, our charter would be to develop and implement a long-term vision for the new Canadian public schools as a sustainable, high-performing school district, and includes identifying a process to develop, vision, and plan for the district, creating a timetable for the process that includes regular board updates and frequent opportunities for engagement and developing a budget to support the process and its implementation. So realizing, we had looked at doing two-year deliverables, but understanding now that the standing committee can only be a first year, so I'll just talk about the first year, looking that we need to maybe do some things in the following year, so that our deliverables would be process plan, identifying the stakeholders, external and internal data collection requirements and indicators, identify a budget for the process plan, and then have a timetable for the process plan to create the vision. That if the committee is successful and the board decides to continue on with it, in the following year, we would like to have, create clear and broad-based metrics for long-term district success that are aligned with the articulated vision and plan, timeline, and budget for the implementation of the vision. So the scope, the composition of the committee would include three Board of Ed members, so currently Scott, myself, Penny is going to be helping, perhaps, and I would recommend that, because it's such an important part about what the board actually does, that we could maybe bring on another Board of Ed member into the committee, so if there are, is anyone else interested in working on this, because this really speaks to what we're doing and how we move forward as a district. The meeting frequency would be as needed, minimum quarterly, and then, like I said, we'd need to amend the final deliverable, because we were looking at a two-year process rather than a one-year, so if this is just a one-year standing committee, we would come up with the deliverable of having the first-year plan, yes.
All I can say is, I went through the same processes you did about standing versus special, and then I reread the special committee charter, and there is nothing in the special committee charter that limits it to just one year.
Okay.
So you could have a special committee that was 18 months, it's if you are, I believe that the enrollment, the Educational Resources Committee was seen as one that was going to become a standing committee, that was my understanding, if I'm wrong, somebody correct me. But, so that was why a standing, you can't just create a standing committee, you have to create a special committee, but for example, if we wanted to create a Board of Ed committee that had an 18-month timeframe or something, for something, we wouldn't have to stop it after six, after 12 months, in my view, somebody else can read the bylaws differently. So I think that the two-year timeframe, if that was what the board thought was appropriate for this committee, we could pass at this time. So if other people agree with me, then I had, I had some comments about the second-year deliverables that we could go to, but if people didn't agree with me, then we don't have to go there now.
Discussion on whether or not it should be 18 months, or two years, or one year? Discussion?
Well, it seems to be a question that Penny read the bylaws and interpreted it one way, others may read it a different way. What if you said three years or four years, at some point you created a commanding, a standing committee, and I'm not saying...
I think if you said three years, I think if you said three years, it would be like a standing committee.
I'm just saying, it's not clear yet, Penny brings up a very good point, but it's not clear what the answer is, and so people would have to look at that, I think.
I actually have the same interpretation as Penny, because I think if you look at the difference between the templates for the standing and the special, the difference really is in the special number eight, which says final deliverable or end date, which I think in the standing, I can't remember what we had, there was something else that, I don't know if you have it or not.
I do.
But at least I didn't see anything that gave a time limit on the special, so I mean, I...
Actually, in the bylaws themselves, under special committees, it says, "A special committee will specify a termination date or final deliverable. As one component of its charter, the charge, duration, or scope of a special committee shall only be changed by revising the charter." It doesn't say anything about one year. The one-year piece is, we cannot create a standing committee until it is a special committee for a year, then it rolls into the standing committee, so I would agree with that.
Then the policy review will have to look at this and say, does it make sense that you don't need, then you don't need standing committees, because you can make a special committee last as long as you want.
No, no, you couldn't make a special, if you made a special committee last three years, then you'd be, in effect, creating a standing committee, and so you would have to go back to one year.
But that's not in the bylaws. You're using common sense.
Why was we on the board when we passed it? I think that was our intent. I'm using legislative history.
But it's not what you did.
Although, Jean, I think what Dr. Lutz was saying, too, that there's an end date, so you have a deliverable at an end date, whereas, you know, so a standing committee
doesn't have...
Standing committee has an end date, too. It's three years after it starts.
Well, they sunset, yeah, we have a sunset provision.
Can I make, can I make a suggestion on this?
I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to say that there's, the policy that obviously has some questions, is questionable.
I have a suggestion, I have a suggestion on this, because I think these are interesting points that have been raised and really important points. And we do have a policy review committee that is going to be going into, excuse me, a policy review person who is going to be working with attorneys to get our policies and look at them and clarify them. Maybe the suggestion would be, at this point, that we just hold the second year. This is just a suggestion, and then we can turn it into a motion or not, but know that we have that, this possibility, and do this committee the way that the other committees are, just so that it's for uniformity until we make a decision with the policy review.
I, by the way, have no objection to having a two-year special committee, I'm just pointing out that at some point, it doesn't make sense that it could be equal to three years, or four years, or five years. But anyway, I have no problem with having this special committee be two years and not to do research on the issue.
All right. Deanna?
I kind of agree with you, Hazel, is that for making things clean, I mean, you've done the work, you have the second year, you know, deliverable. It would be easy to pull it back up next year and, and go into year two after your first-year deliverables have been executed. So, I would, I would, for sort of making things clean and consistent, say, let's go with year-one deliverables and then review for year-two next year.
Because I'm not hearing any objections to what's in the year-two. It's having to do, try to keep this uniform with the committees so that we can not be trying to make up the whole new bylaw while we're sitting here at the table, which could go on for some time.
True, no, and I agree, I mean, but there's two approaches for it, I guess, and I guess we just have to decide the approach that Deanna just mentioned, of just keeping the one year, or if you want to do it, say that this is, because it's a two-year projection of, to meet the goals, that we say that this is proved as-is for two years, and then Jean, as the...
Policy review person.
Policy person can look over and just make sure that our policy reflects that, so as we're going forward, so, you know, to get that amended and bring it up at the next point, meaning if it needs to get clarified in the policy. Because I don't think there's any difference in opinion about it, it's just a matter of semantics, and so we can fix that, rather than having to come back again next year and create something different because we want to keep something due to a certain interpretation.
Yes, Deanna.
Well, and I actually have another reason for maybe doing a one-year, is that, you know, let's say at the end of year one, we're, we, I think we need to reevaluate sort of where we're going with it, and I think that will give us the time in a year to kind of relook at where we are and what we're doing, and, and how we want to move forward, because time changes things, and maybe we need to reevaluate sort of what the deliverables are after year one.
Okay, discussion, yes.
I was just going to say, I agree with the consistency, I mean, when we did the Communications Committee, that was kind of our thing, like, let's just see how it goes for a year, let's set out our goals, and then we're going to, you know, decide in November if we need to continue on in the same trajectory as we're going, or change. I think it just, clean, consistent, you know, for now, I mean, that's what I think.
Okay, any other, Allison?
I was actually going to take a little different approach and just say, I would encourage us to stay flexible, because I think depending upon what the mission of the committees are going to be, and what, you know, we may need a two-year. And when we, we talked about this at the workshop, we were very specific about the fact that this work was not going to get done in 12 months. So, I guess my question would be, how would that affect the committee if they knew they were only looking one year out versus being able to look two years out in terms of planning? You know, maybe it wouldn't affect them, maybe it would, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, because some of this depends on, you know, as you develop the process, and when the timetable, like, if we're done and we got the process by, before the year-end, that means we can't start on the next portion of it, we have to wait on doing it. So, if you want to invite a speaker in, we can't do that, because that's the implementation of the process versus then creating the process. So, it does, because it's, you don't know how long it's going to take certain things, so that's why it's kind of a longer process. So, yes, it might be a little cumbersome, but I'm not sure, it might work out. It's hard to tell it now.
Yes, Penny.
I just had a change to suggest in the second item charge, which is that it says to develop and implement a long-term vision for the new Canadian Public Schools, and I think it's actually to, it should be to assist the Board of Education in developing and implementing a long-term vision for the new Canadian Public Schools, because I think it's our collective vision as a board. It's such an important task, we want to have a few members, I know that, which I think is, but I just think it's clear, we want to have a few members, you know, really work on it and help us facilitate that process. So, I would suggest adding that, making that language change.
Penny, would you say it just once more, to assist?
I think it's in the by which I gave you.
Yeah, to assist Board of Education, so right before you're saying, right after charge, instead of just saying, "To develop," you say, "to help," or "to assist Board of Ed to develop and implement a..."
Okay. Now, going back, we need to have a, we need to have first a decision, it seems to me, I need one and two. I mean, maybe we can do this one, because this one goes for whether or not it's year one or two or not, the change that's been there. Do, does anybody want to put a motion forward about...
About the line change from Penny about the assisting the Board of Ed?
That, that would be one that we'd probably want to talk about, and the second one is the two years at once or one year at once. How about, how about a motion on the wording?
Well, I would say, I would make a motion to go with the two-year plan on that one, that particular one, only because our bylaws allow it. I mean, we didn't, we specifically didn't restrict our special committees to one year, I think to allow that flexibility, and this might be an instance where we need that flexibility, so, I mean, I would make a motion to, to move this committee for, for the two-year term.
I second that.
Did I understand correctly that the standing, the committees are supposed to be standing committees first for one year and then become a committee?
Special first.
Special first, okay.
If it's going to be a standing committee.
If it's going to be standing.
It starts for the first year, special, and goes to standing.
So...
Or you can have a special committee, depending upon the scope of the project that is created for, that spans multiple years.
Okay, so that would be a different...
That would be this one.
So, do you want to fit your motion into either of those, Allison? There's two choices, to make it standing and special.
No, no, there's not.
No, the motion is to make it a special committee for two, for a two-year duration.
Okay.
Which is okay in the bylaws.
Which is allowed by our bylaws.
And I think just to support, to second that and support that, that this charter that the committee has developed, I mean, they've rationalized here in detail why they need more than one year to accomplish the goal, so I think we should allow them that time. I think that, you know, this, this committee is going to be facilitating, as Penny said, the entire board, developing this, it's putting a process in place to determine your long-term strategy, that that process will be repeated over time. But I would, for those reasons, second Allison's motion.
Okay, now, so at this point, is this going to be a first read, or do we need to, we need to first have an opinion, is it everybody?
It's a first read, right.
First read. Before we vote, I have two more changes.
We're not voting.
Before we make a motion, I just had two more, two more small changes before someone makes a motion, which is in Section 8.
We already made a motion.
Oh, okay. It's been seconded. All right, well, go ahead. Anyhow, so here's, I think it should, instead of saying, "Present the long-term vision for the school district," it should be, "Present the Board of Ed's long-term vision." So, it's basically the same change as I was, I think people agreed on for Section 1, Section 2, that would kind of echo it in Section 8. And then, in terms of who should be on it, I think that it, it should be the same language as I suggested, that we're doing it, as I suggested for the other board, that the committee will be appointed in accordance with Article 3, Section 5.1 of the Board of Ed bylaws.
Okay, so these are, these are editing things that are changes, and at this point, I'm not seeing anybody objecting to those. Is anybody objecting to those?
No, I'm not objecting, but I just have one, one quick point of clarification, actually, I'm curious. We have written into all of our, all of these templates that we, at least three Board of Ed members on each committee. I guess my question, just so we have a general understanding, what if we don't have three members on the committee? Is that still going to constitute a committee, or does that mean we're not going to have a committee? I just want to put us in a position, I just want to make sure we all have a general understanding, whatever it happens to be, but by saying a minimum of three people, to me, would insinuate if we didn't have three, we wouldn't have that committee.
I think it's a good point, because we do not have a policy committee, we have a policy review person.
So, Allison, is your question, like, for example, if some, if a committee member were to come off their term on the Board of Education, and that committee is left with only two members, is that still a committee? Is that your question?
Or on any committee, if we only had two people. I mean, in other words, for scope and composition for all of these, we're saying, will be comprised of at least three Board of Education members. You know, we have three committees at this point in time, we could have three on each if we decide to go to four committees, you know, or future boards decide to go to four committees or whatever, you're not, you know, potentially, you may not have three people on it. It may not be an issue for us, but I just want to make sure we're all understanding, if we don't meet that three-person minimum, are we still going to have that committee? Is that our understanding? Because I personally, and I think I said this before, but I would rather see us say at least two members, in a sense, because that at least guarantees us, I think, a committee, but...
But right now, the policy reads three, and we cannot change it tonight.
I don't think it's...
No, no, it's not in the policy, I don't think.
I think we have it in our templates, I think.
No, I think it's in that.
Maybe it is in our bylaws.
I think that it is lifted from our policy.
Bylaws.
I think it's in the bylaws for standing committee, but I'll check.
Let's check with our legal counsel.
Okay, we have a motion and seconding right now for this, and the only difference is to say at least are three, or if that'll be changed.
Well, we don't necessarily even have to change it, I just, that was just a question, because I was asking myself what the answer to that would be, and I...
But I think, if it's not in our policies, I think that's a valid concern, and I think that makes sense to say then two, because sometimes you might still bring on three, but there might be a gap between when you get that third member on, just because of where we are with elections and such, so...
Right, elections, right.
It makes sense, unless it's already in the policy, that it's three.
So, we're approving these tonight as a first read, so it'll be, we've got the time in between. So, I've been keeping some notes of the questions and things that are coming up around the bylaws, so I'd be happy to, to look into that and to let you know on Friday, what, you know, what the language looks like. Try to interpret it that way.
That would be terrific. Lisa, how are you doing? Have you got?
I'm ready.
That's terrific. Any other comments or anything else people want to add?
I just want to thank the people who took the trouble to put together these very good templates for all that time and effort. I think that's terrific. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Penny, I agree. Looking down here, we're coming to the donation from the All Sports Booster Club. Dr. Lutzey, would you frame that for us?
Sure. This was, we talked about this briefly at the last meeting as well, the, it's the idea that we'll, for accounting purposes, we're going to, the All Sports Booster Club is offering us a donation of $58,134, which would be to fund the coaching positions and all, each of the various sports that we have. There's at least one All Sports Booster Club-funded coach in each one of our sports, and it really helps us to lower the ratio of students to, to coach, you know, student athletes to coach on the field, which is great for safety, great for instruction, and this is for the fall. So, it's a way that we will be able to, you know, sort of account for the cost of our entire athletic program, as we talked about. So, it's very generous of them. And you saw the letter from Tracy.
Is there any discussion on this? I think it is a very generous thing, and it's a wonderful addition to our program. Is there someone who would like to move that we accept this donation? Move to accept a donation, the amount of $58,134 from the All Sports Booster Club allocated for volunteer coach stipends for the fall of 2014 season? Sheri's moving, and a second. Thank you, Sanquita, and thank you, Sheri. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. That's eight of us unanimous. Moving to the consent agenda, we have four, excuse me, three items on the consent agenda, and I believe that these can be all moved to be accepted with one motion. If there's someone who would move to accept the consent agenda, please. Thank you, Deanna. Second, Penny Ration, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda. That was eight unanimous vote. And announcements about future meetings. Dr. Lutzey?
Sure, our next meeting is October 6th, and at this point, we would have one item on the agenda, and then adjourn the meeting so that we could go into some subcommittee meetings. The item on the agenda would be approval of the Special Committee charters, and then, as we had talked about over the summer, about having some workshop time, it'd be an opportunity for the subcommittees to meet, establish a calendar, and go through some of the planning around the work that they'll be doing going forward. So, that's our, that's our future meet?
Yes.
So, I have a question, and so for, for future meetings, as we have these committee workshop times, is, is it appropriate to invite in, like, if we have other experts that we want at those committee meetings, is it appropriate to invite those in? These will be posted committee meetings.
Yes.
So, we are able to, I just want to make sure we're all clear on that aspect of it.
Right, and those, those meetings, I don't, I don't anticipate them being frequent enough to do all of the work of the committees.
Right, right, of course not.
The, as we, as we talked about it a bit, this is also an opportunity for us to maybe bring in some, a speaker or two...
Right.
Around some of, some of the goals that we discussed. So, we do have one that's also in December, we'd set up on the calendar, and I've spoken with somebody who is available that evening to come in and talk to us a little bit about future schools, the same person we spoke with in July, you know, who did that work, if there's an interest around that. So, it's an opportunity to do some of the subcommittee work, but also to do some, some learning together around some of the topics, you know, at hand. But I would say, to answer the question, I, in my understanding, is yes, that these would be, they, it would be a meeting for the subcommittee, so...
Next item on our agenda is to adjourn to executive session in accordance with CGS 1210B9, negotiations the topic. Yes, Jean? Move that, second. Deanna, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.